Right, I see we're live.
Yep, we're live.
All right, sorry for the mask. I'm in Pima County and we're under all kinds of COVID orders right now because the numbers are going through the roof. Um, it's 10:05 and this is a special meeting, um, or a budget study session with
9:05.
He's well, he's one hour ahead.
I know.
10:05 here, 9:05 there. Thank you. Um, and uh, both boards have been invited um, to this meeting and we'll start uh, with a roll call.
Rich Rossman?
Harry Andrews, District 4.
Todd Fisher.
John Crawford.
Bruce Ansel.
Jason Van Der Beek.
Sean Ward.
Chris Parks.
And then we have viewing also uh, Local 106.
Yep, Kenneth Cunningham.
And I see Jenny's here as well and uh, we have heard from Commissioner McMurray. She has a uh, work commitment that uh, she can't get out of and we have not heard from Dave Hanson or Mark Chamberlain. So, I am going to turn this meeting over to Chief intervene since you guys can probably barely hear my muffled voice anyway. So, Chief.
Okay, wel- welcome everybody to the 2021 budget study session. I appreciate everybody being here. Um, this is uh, a little odd and doing this over Zoom. Uh, the only experience I have in seeing these before has been live. So you'll have to bear with me a little bit. I'm going to do the best. You know, things we've always been able to put on a giant screen for all of us to see and have tons reams of paper um, have been a little challenging this year. So um, like I said before, uh, the open invitation to meet and go over this stuff line by line if you'd like to. Um, so we've had some challenges in 2020, COVID not being the least of them. Um, the other is uh, you know, the transition leadership and um, kind of me taking over a uh, partially done budget. I've done the best uh, I can to make the budget um, quote unquote, my own this year with uh, realizing that um, 2021 is still gonna be a topsy-turvy year with with COVID and um, RFA planning and not really wanting to keep things kind of status quo and not do anything big and exciting this year in anticipation of a new department in 2022. And so really what I hope you see in this budget is, like I said, status quo, some increases that we've been able to count on uh, in, you know, wages and benefits. Um, also some increases in training budget. But for the rest of it, it's pretty much um, it's kind of, I tried to clean it up and Benita and I have tried to clean it up, I should say. You know, as our relationship has developed with District 4 and as we move forward to an RFA, we're trying to make District 4's costs more clear for both entities. I guess uh, maybe fair would be the, would be the right way. So you, right word to use. So you'll see in there that I've um, you know, the word cutouts has been used a couple of times this year and I've really tried to do that. Make the, the District 4 payment. Um, you know, I, I've picked up and I've, I'm hearing that um, there's been some concerns about what is District 4 paying for and um, I've tried to make that really, really clear um, and really, and hopefully fair. This comes after a couple of meetings with Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Ansel, uh, where the three of us sat down and talked about, you know, how, how are we doing things and um, what is District 4 paying for? So I've, I've tried. Let's, let's see, let's see what you guys think. Um, the budget, you know, we have a meeting next week um, to approve the budget if, or I can keep further refining it if that's your wishes. So as you go through the packet that um, that Jenny sent out, you'll see the first page is a um, a budget summary. So you can see what, you know, 2015, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, kind of how the budget has developed. And certain, and, and the, the big um, the big line items, I guess you'd say, in those, in those, in those separate divisions. You'll see that um, the uh, the base budget has grown um, over the years and um, I am using a I don't want to say more transparent, but uh, um, I'm, what I'm doing is showing all the revenue that's coming in. And, and then budgeting under that and then budgeting with that, with those funds. If there's savings, then it goes into savings. If there's, if there's not savings, then, then we run a zero balance based budget or pretty close to it. That's how I'm comfortable doing it and um, the counsel I've received from other chiefs and commissioners and finance people are telling me that that's the, the best and clearest way to do budgeting as opposed to budget for the savings in front and then work downwards towards that. Um, we've got, we all know that we have a lot of things that have been um, neglected over the years, whether it's facilities or apparatus. We've gotta, we've gotta start hitting and working on some of those, some of those items. Otherwise our infrastructure is going to crumble. We could have, we can have the greatest uh, most well-paid people in the world, but if they don't have any rigs to respond on, then we're gonna, we're not going to be able to complete our task. So, moving down into the next page, um, it's the budget comparison uh, fund totals and page one is going to show revenue. And like I said, the reason, if you look at the first line for the current year taxes, um, the reason you see the large jump in what we're expected to get in on taxes is because I'm just reporting to you what the county expects us to get. Uh, I'm not holding out any savings in the beginning. As we move through there, the, the highlighted um, pieces for um, for revenue are the, the typical grants, um, leaseholders excise tax, transport fees, which you can see have come up. So in like, take 2019, for example, Fire District 21 was expected to get $360,000 in transport fees. Fire District 4 uh, in 2019, or excuse me, in um, in 2020 was expected to get um, $45,000 in transport fees. Um, or no, sorry, $15,000 in transport fees. And both, both are exceeding their expectations based on just higher call volumes and significantly for District 4, what you're seeing is the um, is the uh, auto aid agreement with Bellicam. Station, Station 12's calls and transports have gone, have increased enough that they're seeing a significant revenue increase uh, in transports.
Hey Chief, just clarification, um, am I, am I messed up on the, the years at the top of the, the chart? Um, when we're talking 2019 and 2020?
Oh, I'm just seeing that here, hang on.
I mean.
Let me uh, oh, okay, sorry.
If you go down to, yeah, if you go down to the bottom.
Hang on, I'm getting stirred, right? There we go. So if we go to page eight, sorry. Page eight is where I wanted you to look. No, that's not it either.
No, go down, go down.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay.
Thank you, Benita.
I'm a little nervous here. Yeah, Benita's, Benita's helping me. Um, so if you go down uh, to it, there's the typical bias page of the budget comparison total. So go past page nine to page, the next page one. And this is where doing this on computer is going to be hard compared to paper.
Jason, is that the, is that this page that says revenues on top?
Yep.
Right.
This comes out of bias.
And Jason, real quick, the, the numbers from the Kelly are not finalized, right?
Correct. They won't finalize till late December, early January.
Right, okay.
Okay.
These are the um,
Yes. So the, these are the, I'm sorry, these are the budget numbers we created. I'm, I'm sorry, I so these are the, the budget numbers that we created based on past experience and looking at that previous page. Does that make sense? So what we did was we took, we took the numbers of the revenue that we had received up until it, it had last been reconciled in October, divided everything by 10 and then times to by 12 to get, to get to these numbers where we're at today. Does that kind of make sense?
Okay, you're on right now, Jason.
Sorry, sir. I am on here. Let me share my screen.
I think it would be page, page 12 of our uh, packet. Page 12?
Oh, 12.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, I can.
So we're on, we're on page 12 here. So if you go to the, this is, this is the page, this is the last page from, from bias. And this is the, this is the, the, the next page is what we're on here. These are my, these are my um, this column here, the total budget. It's in this right-hand column, it's the total budget. This column on the left, what you'll see as we go down, this is going to be the, how the District 4 payment was calculated. And if, as you fall along, you'll see here how this works. So Pete, this is, this number here, this six, 6.446 is the projected revenue from the county for Fire District 21. We have a couple of Washington State grants, Department of Health grants, some timber harvests, some leaseholder excise tax. The District 4 contract payment, as I've calculated it, not, this is the budget study session. Fight the contract fees from the school districts, from the state parks. Also this 13,000 is from the um, the casino, the Nookset Casino. Projected ambulance transport fees for District 21 and District 4. Anything you see highlighted here has been credited or credited, either credited District 4's contract payment or pulled out of District 4's contract payment. So investment general, uh, investment interest, apparatus repair service, this is our contract with the City of Linden. Reimbursements. Reimbursement for the paramedic overtime, which carries forward into next year with two more people going to uh, paramedic school. Miscellaneous rebate payments, that's from um, credit card, credit card rebates. And proceeds from capital asset sales. This is a, excuse me, this is a low, a low estimate based on um, what we've seen over the past five years. Okay, so.
Jason, is that like surplus equipment?
Yes, sir. Yep. This year was higher because we sold some, some old tenders and some old ambulances. You know, I don't ex, we, we can't do that every year. So I'm not expecting a ton of revenue from things like that. So here you can see the total, the total budget. And earth, excuse me, total revenue. As we move down into the administration division, once again, these yellow, when we get into um, expenditures, anything that's in this yellow, and I apologize for not being darker or more yellow, but that's what color came out. These are items that are being withheld from the District 4 payment contract calculation, which is something that Commissioner Ansel and um, Commissioner Hanson and I had discussed. So you can see things like commissioner meetings, regional fire authority committee meeting, uh, reimbursement to the commissioners has been held out. PFML benefits, which is the state uh, benefits. It's not much, but it's, it's being held out. I would like to draw your attention back up to um, salaries for administration. For the admin salaries and the mechanics, I have factored in a 3% wage increase. They received um, the, the group received nothing last year. There was no, no COLA increases last year. Um, two employees did get um, did get raises. But the mechanics and um, and one other administrative employee did not get any sort of raise last year. So I factored in 3% for everybody, which falls in line with um, what the bargaining unit got. They did not get the same raise last year as the bargain. Factored in some overtime increases in um, actually decreases in LNI or LNI rates went down. Our um, medical and dental, there's a slight increase in that. Uh, it's 2.5% was the increase uh, in the left two, or excuse me, the uh, left trust benefit, benefits. Uh, that was their calculated increase across the board for all, for all um, people in the, in the group. These are just, these are just the um, what you see from Commissioner, PFML benefits meetings, RFA C, from there on up is just administrative salary costs, salaries and benefits. Below is where we get into the operational costs of the of the administrative division. So really, if you Yes, ma'am.
Can we ask questions or at the end or in between or?
Um, Mr. Anderson, you can go with that.
Um, you know, if there's a specific thing that comes up, we should probably try to take a look at it while we're here.
Okay, it might be easier just because this is kind of confusing with on Zoom. What was your question, Chris?
Uh, I was wondering about the retired left one, medical dental. Is that something you would take out of the District 4 costs since it's for left one retirees?
I, that is something I think we should discuss definitely because um, that was a District 3 employee.
Yeah.
Prior to um, the, yeah, prior to the um, contract with District 4. So I will um, discuss that with Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Ansel.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. So once we get into the operational costs, really everything stays the same with the exception of um, you can see again audit fees have been cut out of the district board calculation. But really everything is going to stay status quo, which was the discussion I had with uh, our board chair. Yep. And then um, I've reached out and contacted um, oh, there's one other that should be cut out here. Um, so I see a, I see a goof here. So if you go to professional services, administrative and legislative, in the 2020 budget, that was $55,000. That is, those are funds that are used for um, typically contractors that come in and do things like uh, they might do teaching or more specifically what, unfortunately, what we use it for is funds that um, are used for personnel investigations when the unfortunate case arises where we have to do one of those um, those type of things. This year, that has also been used um, in the 20, let me go back, in the 2018 budget, that was put in there for the ESCI. Sorry, in the 2019 budget, that was in there for the ESCI report. I rolled that over last year with the with the intent of using it for the RFA uh, study. That's what I've done. Um, but in order to be more clear, and um, Chris, I've got a note about this.
Yeah, I, I wasn't clear on that one.
No, I, what I've done is I've created it, we've created a new bar, bars uh, number and you see, right underneath that, you see professional services, RFA. Also being cut out from the district 4 because the, the commissioners of both districts have decided that the, that the RFA costs will be paid 50/50 and um, that way we're, we're capturing money or funds for District 21 um, that are not being paid for by District 4 to be, to go towards that RFA um, payment or towards, towards the RFA consulting fees. So I apologize, that should be highlighted as well. I will rework the calculations and make sure that that has been pulled out of the just, the total District 4 number. Um, I, I believe it has, but I'm not sure why. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be in this column. So um, I've got a note to, to re, research that. But other than that, other than that change, there is really, there's really almost no increase with the exception of professional dues um, administrative and legislative because the Washington State Fire Commissioners their um, their dues increased pretty significantly uh, this year due to not being able to have their conference. So other than that, everything is pretty much status quo as far as what, what we did last year. The election costs, uh, we increased those to $30,000 as we're going to have two elections in 2021. Uh, that would be Commissioner Crawford and Commissioner McMurray. So we went back and looked at what, what, what District 21 had spent for la- last time we ran two elections, factored an increase and put that number in there.
Can I ask a question, Jason?
Yes.
About the professional dues that you mentioned. Um, I budgeted in the District 4 budget for the professional dues for the um, the county, the state commissioners.
Yeah.
Um, District 4 pays a share of, also of the District 21 dues or how, how is that split up?
So if, well, no, if District 4 is going to pay their own, then we would, we would have a discussion about cutting that out as well.
Okay, yeah. I, I put them in the budget, you know, to
Okay.
Go either way. I can take them back out of the District 4 budget or you can go ahead and adjust that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey Jason, just, just for clarification, I think during our discussions with Commissioner Hanson, that we agreed that each district was going to pay their own professional dues, et cetera. So I don't know if that 6,500 is a um, combination of both districts total or if we separated that out.
I gotta beat to my brain being a little jumbled this morning.
But I think, you know, this question is, is appropriate since if, if District 4 is, is figuring to, to pay those expenses on theirs, either our number should be smaller or that number should be highlighted.
Yes. Um, I will, I'll, like I said, we'll send that an update. That's, that's why we're doing this and get more
No. It's uh, it's a work session, so um.
All right. So that is, that is the complete administrative division budget. Operating expenses. Uh, move down to the big, the big dog here. Uh, operations division. So this is, this is the big one here. So um, salaries for operations, this factors in a 3% contractual wage increase. And this includes uh, four new hires, which will fill out our um, organizational chart. For new, for new firefighters. So total of uh, 4.525 million for salaries for operations. Volunteer salary 25,000 and Division Chief for Operations 120,000. This year also I've included, um, we, Benita and I broke out the cost of the longevity education SCBA incentives, which is something new in the contract. It's new in the contract last year. It was not um, expressly budgeted for, but we felt like it was important enough to, to break that cost out so that we can see it. Um, just, it's just more transparent. Out of class, overtime. I'm going to take a risk and leave overtime at the same, same budget, even though we blew it this year. Um, I feel with uh, with the way we're, we've got the um, the bargaining unit more in doing some help with uh, scheduling and um, also with the additional hire of four, four FTEs. Um, I believe we can, we can keep pretty close to, to that, not, not. Uh, also I'm hoping with uh, it sounds like we're getting some good news about a possible COVID vaccine. That may, you know, I'd expected that to take almost a year to, to trickle down to us and I'm, I'm thinking we actually may get a vaccine for our folks a lot quicker. Obviously, compliance will be individual at this point. Um, but I'm hopeful that our people will be interested in doing that and we can reduce some of that uh, the overtime that we've had for people being out based on exposures. So um, we also factored in the sick leave buyout, which is not something that's been, or put in the sick leave buyout, which is not something that has been um, put in there and then um, you can see the deferred comp numbers for, for the bargaining unit. Our LNI costs have gone down. Medical and dental have stayed relatively flat. Uh, like I said, a 2.5% increase there. Um, the VIBA line here. I'll put my cursor right there, the VIBA line. So that is for people that opt out of healthcare. Uh, we have a provision in the contract. If someone is able to prove that they have healthcare through their spouse, they can opt out of healthcare. Um, and they receive a payment every month that um, that goes into a um, medical expense account that they can use for medical expenses, but saves us the cost of insuring uh, their entire family or family and, you know, themselves and their spouse. So life insurance, um, disability insurance, most of these things stayed fairly flat. Um, our LNI costs went down a little bit. And then after that, we get into the, the actual operational um, expenses. So uniforms for both operations and volunteer. We did do a slight increase in uniforms uh, in the Cintas rental of uniforms, but um, as far as things like t-shirts and boots, things are staying pretty flat in there. Immunizations, we bumped up a little bit. We're unsure as far as what the cost will be for um, or if there will be any associated costs with the COVID vaccine, but we did increase that a tiny bit. The EAP costs were flat. We increased um, operational supplies for EMS by $5,000 just based on expenses. We are able to capture some of that back through CARES funds because there has been, I would say, a significant increase in what we're paying for PPE. Um, but we, like I said, we haven't been able to get some reimbursement through CARES funds and we'll continue to pursue those. Protective clothing, we're going to keep that um, that flat. We have, uh, there's a slight increase in the FARs assessment and the SERP assessment. We've not been told, um, we asked and have not been told about any increases to third-party billing, which um, which is good. And that covers both District 4 and District 21. Um, I'm just now realizing I may have to revise this number based on GEMT stuff, but let me, let me look into that and get back to everyone. That, that, we may need to create a separate bars number for that. Chris, you understand what I'm talking about?
Yes, I know. What do you mean? What do you, what do you think it, the cost is every year for the GEMT processing?
Number 20 and 30 both stick in my head. So I need, I'm, I'm not prepared to, to give you a, a good number yet. a good number yet. So let me do some research and find that out.
Okay.
And really, other than that, just like I told you earlier, really just trying to stay status quo with things this year. Um, as we prepare, A, as we write out the COVID, COVID pandemic, and also really as we work towards forming this RFA, we don't want to make any giant um, changes to things. Not that there's going to be hopefully not a new administration, but just a new, a new board and um, you know, we're creating a new organization. So we wanna kind of keep things steady as she goes until we get to that point. The next is the Fire Prevention Division. And here you can see a lot of cutout. Um, with the exception of CPR. We left that in there as a cost share because we would obviously offer District four do some, some CPR classes. I do have budgeted in there a fire marshal, which would be a bargaining unit position. This is um, this would be to replace a Division Chief level person. This will be in the bargaining unit. They will be an inspector and um, plans examiner and also uh, working with our working with our, you know, mitigation funds that we bring in. There's overtime, a little bit of overtime calculated into that, and then their, their medical insurance costs. And then um, really the, the division was built out quite well this year as far as operational costs. So it's, we're still looking at, um, you know, we still have some things uh, down here like for training and professional organization stuff. Items, the annual bicycle rodeo. You know, we're not, I'm not changing, I didn't change too much pub ed stuff, uh, pub ed costs based on the fact that we hope things will open up, but um, but we're not, I know that um, there's been an interest by the board to increase our pub ed. And um, I, I just can't see us, I can't plan on that this year. So the cost there remained pretty flat. Um, actually reduced based on only having one individual in that office. And again, as you see all of it's yellow, it's all cut out of the District four.
That was fun.
Yeah. Not sure what that was.
So, hey Jason.
Yes, sir.
You, you've got control of my screen here, obviously, but uh, when I, when I look at that uh, document and, and you're talking about uh, what we increased or decreased, that's not easily visible for us is I hate to create more work, but could there be a column of what we did last year versus what proposed as on one sheet? Can that, can that sheet be modified, sorry to suggest more work?
That's fine, that's.
Unless I'm the only one that's, I mean, I, I, I get it. We're, 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 we're kind of staying status quo, but when, when you say, hey, we increased this number or decreased this number, I can't see that.
I, I can, I can. As I was putting this together, it made, it made sense in my head, uh, but I can see it on, I can see all these things physically and I'm realizing now as I'm doing this, that this is probably not very easy to follow on computer. Um, so yes, I have, I think we're gonna have to do some work to give you some updates over the next couple of days so that you can see things. And um, so you can see what's happened in the past, where we're at this year and what, and what we're planning on doing next year. I totally understand and I, I see that.
Yeah. And again, not, not trying to
No.
More work. I think it would just be easier for us to see it. And, and then also for the, the rest of at least our board, I because this is a guessing game and because we're still under COVID and because we don't know where the end of this game is gonna end. The fact that we, we have a proposed budget doesn't mean that it isn't subject to being amended. Either next year as numbers come in, uh, the accurate numbers from the county and or any significant changes that may occur to our operations based on sort of what the condition of the medical community, I don't know, is. Uh, you know, we're asking you to predict the future and none of us are capable of doing that, but I just maybe for the, this for the rest of the people to understand that just because we do look at this and approve it, it doesn't mean that it can't be adjusted. As, as dynamic as things seem to be.
Absolutely. And, and I thank you for saying that. And that was what I was gonna, I was, I have that on my list of things to kind of say at the end that this is, this is my best guess. Um, and or, you know, and uh, yeah, it can be amended anytime and I'm not, um, I'm not so proud as to bring you an amendment in February. If I'm, if I'm way off. So I know that that may be, uh, maybe not the way things have been done in the past, but I it takes a while for it to fire department. So we're uh, we'll do this together. But yes, absolutely. I will, it shouldn't take too long for us to um, prepare that so that it's more clear, past, past experience and then what I'm, what I'm planning on for next year. Thank you for, for bringing that up.
And then just for the record, um, I see that Commissioner Hanson has joined us. So we can add him um, to our minutes um, in our, in our roll call. Welcome, Commissioner Hanson.
Sorry for my lateness there.
Uh, Commissioner Hanson, just real quick, um, I'll share my screen again.
Was that the one that was up when I?
Yes, sir.
Sent it?
Yep. Um, and what, what you're seeing here is anything in yellow is something that I've removed from the calculation for District four payment. So don't get excited. This is the biggest one.
Okay. You did a good job, Jason.
Yeah. So this uh, so anything you see in yellow. And um, and I wanted to make sure that you know that um, if you want to get together, any commissioner wants to get together between now and next Thursday uh, and go over this on paper, we can actually see and touch it. I'm happy to do so. So. The next is the Training Division. This one is a little bit more robust. I added um, there, you know, I, in the budget, I have asked to hire four new firefighters. We have in our contract, um, and we strive to always send our new people to North Bend, to the State Fire Academy. Um, there's been a little bit of concern over how healthy that is for our folks right now based on, on um, on COVID and, and how the academy, um, I know they're doing their best, but um, there has been some some difficulties with um, there have been um, some difficulties they've had kind of containing the COVID spread in that, in the academy format that they're using. Um, so I've actually budgeted for both sending people to North Bend and having an in-house academy that will teach to North Bend standards. I hope to have some clarification on this before next Thursday. I'm actually planning on having it before next Thursday, in which case these numbers will change. But I did want to put them in there. So just for clarification. So one of my focuses this year is to revitalize our Training Division. It's been pretty well decimated. We need to get that back up and running for the health and welfare of our folks. Excuse me. So you'll see the Training Captain's wages, benefits, all those things down to um, down here really to where we start into operational supplies. Not a ton of changes um, in the operational supplies, those kinds of things. Where you'll see changes is in the cost of instructors, bringing in outside instructors. Um, and that's going to be a fairly significant increase over the past years and you'll see it on the sheet I get you there, Commissioner Hansel, sorry. But this, this would account for bringing in the instructors to do a um, help with a firefighter one, firefighter two, hazmat operations, all IFSEC certified, as well as um, bringing in instructors and um, the ability to certify our officer candidates to the Fire Officer one, Fire Officer two um, certifications, so that as we do a promotional process later in this year, we are making sure that we're getting vetted and trained officers into our, into our organization, not just promoting based on a single test, which is kind of what we've done in the past in um, the, the, the troops on the floor and I both want to see people, you know, educating themselves and, and earning those certifications uh, that prove they should be in the spot that they're in. So um, that's the, the cost for the increase in instructors. There's go ahead.
Jason, just uh, to reiterate, um, the uh, North Bend Training Academy issue is, our concern is that we believe they aren't taking adequate precautions against COVID that potentially expose our people to that virus. And, and the reason we're not sending them is because we don't want to take that risk.
Correct.
For them. So it, it, I mean, there, there is a health and safety reason that we are not sending them to the academy currently, not that we won't. But until they can guarantee that, that they're taking adequate precautions, and I'm not trying to point fingers or blame anyone, but it sounds like they have not. We, we want to protect our employees.
Correct. We've worked, we've worked really hard to protect our employees all year long, given them the proper P P E, the proper training, the proper, you know, the ability to get tested, uh, to get their families tested if there was concern that they've been exposed. Um, and it sounds like that um, the State Academy's been falling short on that. And I'm, I'm not um, I'm not okay, and I don't think you guys would be okay with hiring new employees and immediately putting them at risk for a disease where we don't really know the long-term, we don't really know the long-term effects. And we don't want them bringing that home to their families on the weekends. And um, we've worked so hard to keep our employees healthy and safe to hire new ones and then throw them into a situation where um, in, in, in the recent past, North Bend has had to shut an academy down due to, due to the spread of the virus and so many recruits getting sick. So I, I need to make sure for myself uh, that, that they've, that they've implemented health and safety things that they need to do to make sure that the recruits can be health, healthy and safety throughout the entire academy as well as their families. And that's, and that's why we have this in here is, is just it's just, we just want to make sure. We don't want to put, I, I'm not okay with, with risking our, our focuses, even our new folks, um, their health and safety. So uh, you still see the, the cost in there for North Bend, for sending recruits up there.
And, and isn't, isn't there sort of a push because multiple departments may be in the same situation? They may offer some sort of modified approach. I mean, I, I get that if they're getting brand new people off the street, but if, if each department is sort of putting on a mini academy and then they need or want the North Bend certification, is, is there a plan to, to maybe have a modified academy approach?
I haven't heard any things about a modified academy, but what we are hearing about what the um, what the instructor, the line item for budget for instructors is that um, some, some people that have worked at North Bend for years and years have come up with a um, a hybrid course, basically, basically, where the, the the instruction, the classroom instructions provided online, the uh, manipulation, the manipulative skills are done with your department, and then the testing and certification is done by this outside company. They come in and, and, and certify that you are meeting the skills, the same skills that you would have at North Bend, that you would get at North Bend. The piece that really um, that, that we can't provide, that North Bend does, is the the live fire experience hours in a extremely varied environment. The burn tower at North Bend provides um, training opportunities that really can't be replicated anywhere in the state. Um, just based on the size of the burn tower and the different pieces, uh, different scenarios they can put you through. And while we are definitely very um, lucky to have our, uh, to actually have access to a burn tower for ourselves. With a single cell burn tower, we can't replicate what, what North Bend can do. And that's, that's truly the value in, in that North Bend Academy is the repetitions and the hours, you know, you basically spend a third of your time up there in live fire and that just can't be done anywhere else. So that's, that's why we're hopeful for the in academy experience, but we are, we are coming up with a plan B because twenty twenty, you have to.
I'm assuming there's probably several departments doing in the same position we are.
They are. We've reached out to them. Uh, it's mostly the bigger departments. I would call them bigger departments than us. Um, we've reached out to see if we could piggyback into their academy.
Yeah.
And their costs are quite high. They also have waiting, waiting lists and they are, um, the departments that are pulling it off are going to their, are allowing departments from their counties first. Uh, the county we found most open to this is Snohomish County. And they've got, they've got a large number of paid firefighters and they've got, you know, they've already got forty people on a waiting list. Two academies, but um, the cost for the cost of sending someone to North Bend for the, the entire cost, so um, tuition, lodging, food is what it would cost to enroll them in their academy. And then we would still have to provide housing and food on top of that. So it's, it may be cost prohibitive. And the other nice thing about North Bend is you get a basically trained firefighter back. There's no, there's no department spin on it. Um, we start sending people to South County or to, you know, the East Metro uh, Recruit Academy. We're gonna get back, which is, isn't horrible, but we're gonna get back a Bellevue firefighter or an Everett firefighter, which isn't bad. It's just they, then they have to learn the North Wacom way. Whereas with North Bend, you just get a basically trained recruit firefighter who's kind of an open book. And you, you, you sprinkle in those things, uh, department specific. So like I said, I, we will have clarification on this between now and next Thursday. So when I present the actual budget to you for for hopefully passage, um, we'll see, you'll be able to see the actual costs as opposed to what I'm proposing today. Moving on down, registration and tuition for classes is increased based on the fact that hybrid classes are finally starting to come out. We're, we're starting to see the logjam break free. Companies are putting on classes. We've actually got a few people attending classes here in the next month, so. Moving on down to facilities. I heard you. Um, you'll see the salaries and wages and benefits all, all cut out, um, all removed for twenty twenty one. We're uh, working on that R F P that I was directed to work on for a facilities person. All these things, there's, there's slight increases in um, alarm monitoring and sprinkler testing as told by our security solutions, our folks that do that. Everything else is really staying the same. Except for, um, let's see where is it? Uh, I did increase custodial services so that we can get carpets cleaned uh, at some of our stations that have carpet because we've not um, been very good about getting that done. The other thing that you'll see here is um, where my cursor is, repair maintenance of station, I've increased that number. Uh, what I did was I took, we had, previously we had seventy five thousand What I did was I took, we had, previously we had $75,000 budgeted for the facilities maintenance person. I wiped that out and added some money to repair and maintenance of stations. And then also added a maintenance service contract, which is what I hope the RFP will, that will get us that, you know, a private contractor to come in and do the work. That's a best guess at costs. That's based on looking around at, really I'm not finding any departments to do this, but school districts are kind of what we're using for a template for this, for this position, so.
What was the closing game for the RFP?
We haven't, we haven't printed it yet. We're still developing it. Haven't posted it yet.
Jason, did you take into consideration that District Four has only two stations now?
Yes. I did, because the cost of Station 11 were pretty minimal. So I'm, yeah, I didn't, I didn't plan a much of a reduction. Like I said, I'm, 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 I tried to shoot high on everything. You know, I know that that gets complicated with the District Four payment.
Yeah, I was just wondering because District Four has only two stations now, like alarm monitoring or sprinkler testing.
Well, actually, it's funny, but Security Solutions counts the Station 12 campus as two buildings. It's not one. So technically it's the same number. I, I didn't realize, I didn't quite realize that, but as I dove into what we pay, yeah, they really look at Station 12 as two different facilities. So yes, there is some reduction based on Station, Station 11, but not, not, not a lot, so. So any questions on the facilities? Moving down to fleet maintenance. What you can see here is, you know, mechanic salaries and to write about EAP is where we get into the, the actual operational supplies. There are slight increases and I apologize if we don't have that page. Oh, fleet maintenance. Where you can see last year versus this year, but it's, it's really the status quo. I didn't do any, I didn't tweak gasoline or diesel. Our cost for the, for gasoline has been pretty, pretty right on. Diesel, we're coming in far under this year in 2020, just because the cost of fuel has gone down. But I'm, this, this number was calculated during the, the bad, the bad fuel times and I'm just, we're comfortable leaving that there where it sits. Training. No. That's the trouble with it. Yeah, we didn't get that on there, so. Yeah, I think because we were looking at, sorry, we, I was just talking to Benita about, about the budget comparison, the first page, you know, it doesn't have the 2021 stuff on there, so we'll correct that and get it sent out. We have big, we've created some new pieces or some new bars line items to, to kind of clean things up. Before we just had, we just had a communications bars number. It was kind of everything that revolved around communications for the entire department got dumped in there. We have, I've taken and created a mobile radio repair in, in the shop and then in operations, portable radios, pagers are all different separate bars items so that they can be, so that we can track really what we're spending on different radios. Like I said before, it was just one pot and we were, every, everybody was pulling from it. So this hopefully will be more, more transparent. We have tires. We've increased our budget on tires. We increased that by $5,000. It's based on the fact that what we're discovering is that a lot of our tender groups' tires or the tender tires have not been ever changed. A lot of them are the original tires they came with. And so we've been replacing those just based on years of service.
Hey Jason, will you get a chance, can you tell us, or maybe you know who our vendor is for tires?
Ashwab.
Okay. Is there a reason for that?
Couldn't give you that answer.
We need shop for vendors.
Copy. Specifically tires or do you want us to shop for all vendors?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to you later, but we're paying way too much. I, I just found out how much we're paying for apparatus tires at the airport and it's a lot cheaper than what I'm seeing.
Okay, yep, absolutely. We can, I welcome any suggestions.
What do they use, John? Do you know?
Well, we get a state rate and I'm trying to figure out why the fire district isn't getting state rate as well.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I appreciate the, the drill down on this page. I think it's great to be able to track these individually.
Yeah, everything was really lumped together and I, and I understand that, you know, especially, I remember Chief Fields' budget presentations and the, the number of bars items, and I didn't want to go back to that, but I do think that we need to have some more. It was, things have been compressed too far and I, you know, we could, we were, we were not able to figure out, we were spending a lot of time going back into bias and looking and seeing what, what did we spend this on and where did it go and just needs to be a little bit more, a little bit more open so that we can find it, see exactly what we're spending things on. There is some, we did put some increase, we did increase the repair budget for engines because of the age of our apparatus. And that's, that's kind of it as far as the fleet goes. Capital projects, this one, I, I don't have this ready for you yet. This will be an update that I'll send out. This was an old page. I actually should have pulled it out and I didn't, so we're not gonna, I'm not asking to spend another $650,000 on breathing apparatus. We spent $650,000 on that. So this was, this was my mistake. There are some capital expenses, mostly in the shop, as well as I would like to budget for one more new ambulance. That would come out of capital apparatus. Although I think we, you know, I don't think we can transfer GEMT funds into that capital apparatus to pay for it, so. As I'm sitting here, I realize now that I don't have the G, GEMT fund breakout that you'd asked for. Let me do one more thing here. And that is, I'm gonna, I'd like to show you something in bias. Are there any questions on what I just, on what I just went over? I know it's, it's hard to do this on Zoom. It's interactive, but it's not interactive enough. I've got your list of questions down here. I'm happy to send out updates and like I said, meet with any of you that would like to meet. So that you can go over it. I'm, I'm fully expecting to have every single commissioner, exception of Commissioner Hansel through here over the next week. Also want to thank you for your patience as I, as I do this.
Hey Jason, do we want to maybe take a five minute break? We've been at this for over an hour now and.
I thought it'd only been five minutes, yeah.
Fill out the water and I can rinse out my mask and.
Like only a couple of minutes to me. Yes, absolutely. Let's take a break. I'll go ahead and pause the recording.